I call it over to the City of Salem City Council Work Session for Monday, October 21st, 2024. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Councillor Stapleton?
Here.
Councillor Nishioka?
Here.
Councillor Phillips?
Here.
Councillor Gwynn?
Here.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councillor Hoy?
Here.
Councillor Nordike?
She'll be joining us remotely.
Councillor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Hoy?
Here.
Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Nordike, I'm sorry, Councillor Nishioka, where did that came from? It's the last one I just said, so it's still stuck in my brain. Councillor Nishioka, do you have a motion for approval of a special meeting agenda?
Yes, Mayor Hoy, thank you. I move to approve of the special meeting agenda.
Sec.
Any discussion?
Don't have anything to discuss.
Thank you. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Nishioka?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Gwynn?
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy? Councillor Nordike? Councillor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Do we have any additions or deletions, Councillor Nishioka?
We do not.
Thank you. All right, we're here tonight to discuss priorities for city services and preferences for possible future funding, and I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John's going to be joining us remotely this evening, but before John starts, I'd like to just offer some perspective. Tonight feels like the kickoff of our 2026 budget process. As I said at our August 19th work session, this is the most important conversation that we're going to have this year. This is the start of a conversation that will shape the future of the city for decades to come. We have big questions ahead of us, and we need to start down the path towards answering those questions. The more clarity that we have, the more likely we'll be able to achieve something important. I don't expect to find all the answers this evening. However, I do hope to start the conversation tonight and to start to define where we are headed to clarify what information we'll need to get there. For years, our city has faced significant fiscal challenges due to the constraints of Oregon's property tax system, particularly measures five and 50, and the growth in the cost to deliver vital services. While property values have risen substantially, the growth of our tax revenue has not kept pace, leading to funding gaps that will require changes to how we provide critical services to residents. This survey we'll be talking about this evening is another piece of feedback related directly to our 2026 budget that we have. This is solid information that tells us something about where we are as a community and organization. This information will inform us as we begin our work with the Budget Committee on October 30th and again on October, November 13th, and on what our 2026 budget will look like going forward. I look forward to hearing your feedback and perceptions on the community survey, and I look forward to working with you, the Budget Committee, our new city councillors in 2025 to formulate our next city budget. Following your direction on August 19th, we worked with DHM Research to survey our community the week of September 10th about what services they may be willing to support with additional revenues. We asked about community services, including parks, recreation, and libraries, and public services, including police and fire. We asked about a variety of tax rates, too. John Horvick, a Senior Vice President at DHM Research, led this project. John is a trusted voice and someone who I have come to rely on for his perspective and his wisdom in this space. I have tremendous confidence in his work. John and his associates at DHM have developed the survey and the report that we are about to hear this evening. John will now present DHM's findings.
Thank you, Mr. Horvick.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I apologize I can't be there in person, but glad that we're able to make a remote option work for us. I'm going to share my screen. And because I can't see you all very well, can someone just let me know that the screen is sharing okay?
It is.
All right, thank you. All right. So I'm John Horvick with Senior Vice President at DHM Research. Along with my colleague, Tony Accarino, we work with the city to do a survey of Salem voters to ask them about the issues that were just described. I'm going to walk through the results. I would say, particularly if there's questions about methodology, or if I'm not being clear about something, I want to make sure that we're communicating effectively to use of stop me. And then I, of course, at the end, will be able to answer questions as long as is needed. So what we did, or the purpose of this project, we wanted to gauge voter support for potential public safety and community livability levies. We'll reiterate this, but in the survey, we made it clear that we're asking about one or the other. We weren't asking about both, and they were described in various ways during the surveys. We wanted to test tolerance for different levy rates, and we wanted to identify voter preferences for how the revenue might support specific staff and their services. So those were the big goals. How do we do this? We've had DHM and the City of Salem have had an opportunity to work together a number of times over the last several years, so some of this will sound familiar, but there are some differences, too. First of all, this is what we call a hybrid survey. That means we're mixing modes, we're using different approaches to reach people, including traditional live interview phone calls. Those are still important to reach people. But more and more, we now include what we call a text-to-online approach. Meaning people are sent a text message with a link where they can take the survey on their smartphone. They can also send that link to another device, a desk of preference. But we do know that people have different expectations, how they'll be reached, they have different preferences for how they'd like to participate, and so it is important to meet people where they're at and provide different options for their participation. The sample size here is 400 voters in the City of Salem. This is conducted September 10th through the 16th, so this is still very fresh and new data, took about 13 minutes. Whenever you do a survey, there are what we call differential response rates, meaning that there are some groups of people who just, for any number of reasons, tend to take surveys more readily than those who don't. And so even if you do a random selection of your sample and you do a random outreach to people, if you don't take account for these differential response rate, you'll end up with the results that are biased towards the groups that are most likely to participate. Women tend to participate more than that, older people more than younger people, those with college degrees more than those with less education. And so we always set quotas when we do a survey. So when we reach a certain population of folks that we know we need to reach, we put all the effort in to try to reach those groups that we have. For this particular project, and this is what's different from some of the work we've done recently together, we set our quotas to model what we'd expect the turnout to be, it says here, May 2025, but really think of any May or November, a special election in an odd numbered year. That's different than, say, a survey on all the adults in the City of Salem, or all registered voters in the City of Salem. We wanted to be clear-eyed about if something went to the voters next year, what is its likelihood of success based upon the population of people who typically turn out in elections like that? So that's a difference from some of the work we've done before. Margin of error, 4.9%, and things might not always add up to 100%. So these are the demographics. I'm not going to spend time here, you have the report, but just know that this is the demographic profile of folks that would typically show up in, again, an odd-numbered year, a special election, which is going to be different. All adults are all registered voters, but you have this on the ready for you. Again, by geography, you will know that some of the wards have relatively fewer participants, and that's because the demographics of those wards is different, and turnout in the wards, we look at previous elections in these type of years, this is the type of balance that we would expect to have. If you look at kind of the major quadrants of the cities, you see them, or I suppose the three parts of the city that we typically divide our work up together, you can see that the number is there. Not unusual, we often will start surveys just asking about how they're feeling about the city, the direction of the city, and what the top issues are. It is partly to get, it's a barometer for how people feel, and it's also a technique to make sure that we get participants. People like to answer these questions, and if you answer the first question, you're more likely to finish the survey, and serves a role there, too. But on that classic question, are things heading in the right direction or are they off on the wrong track? This is the trend line. Again, the 2024 numbers, these numbers, has a slightly different sample, and so that is a factor to consider. But you do see, if you go back to 2017, we've seen this erosion, and folks, people say that the city's headed in the right direction, you can see the increase in the wrong track. This mirrors Oregon and Portland, take any community, it's going to have differences in their heights of these line graphs, but the overall pattern is not unusual. Also, you know, we do see a little bit, you know, some movement in a positive direction from 2022 and 2024, and we're also seeing that in our other research, too. So Salem is consistent with other cities in that respect. Also consistent are one of the issues that people say that are most important. So this is a question that's asked open-ended, and people can say whatever they want. We listen and read all their comments, and we try to put them into meaningful categories. Continues to be homelessness is the top issue that voters in Salem want their leaders to address, and public safety is number two. Public safety has seen an increase from previous years. This is going to, perhaps the fact that they think about these levy asks, and also potentially think about how you communicate about a levy ask to the community. But these are some background stuff to get a sense of the mood and to get folks to be engaged in the survey. In the survey, we immediately moved to these ballot tests, and I'm going to show you, we'll show you ballot tests for the public, what we call the public safety levy, and then the community livability levy. I'm going to do it here for the public safety levy first, but I want to be real clear before I go into the results, that participants were randomly assigned to get either the public safety levy first or the community livability levy first. And so half the participants got this first, half the participants got community livability first. If order had an impact on their attitudes, we wanted to do our best to mitigate that, and this is a technique that we use to do that. So I'm going to show public safety first, but half of the folks in the survey would have seen community livability first. So we asked this question twice. The first time is we ask it as close to what we can imagine would be that caption on the ballot, that very short description of what it is, and using the language that is required to be on a levy. So this is the language we asked about. Shall Salem improve public safety services for fire and police with a five-year levy, $1.50 per thousand assessed value? This measure may cause property taxes to increase more than 3%. This meets the kind of the word limits and the requirements for that statement there at the end that would show up on a ballot. We wanted to be as close to that as we could be. With that, 34% of voters said that they would vote yes on that, 58% said no. So well below a majority. You always, of course, want to look at that top-line number. I would also encourage everybody to look at the dark colors there. The percentage of people said that they're certain to vote yes, and the percentage of folks who said that they were certain to vote no. So 13% yes, 39% no. It's not that these no voters, these people who say certain no, like truly, truly, truly would never vote yes, or couldn't be persuaded, or given information, but they're going to be difficult to move from where they are today. And so it's sort of, you really do want to look at that ratio, that certain yes to certain no, and there's quite a large gap there. But that's also very little information, and it's difficult for folks to understand what are in these short captions. And perhaps if we gave them more information about what it's going to buy, what the outcomes are expected to be, and how much it's going to cost them, that might change their opinions. And so we gave people more information. We told them what it was going to buy. It's going to retain 27 firefighters and add 18 staff to the city's two fire stations. It's going to retain 18 police officers and current graffiti removal, and crime reporting staff, and add 18 officers. It's going to have these benefits, like improved citywide fire response times, and enhanced firefight ability to handle multiple complex emergencies, survival rates, investigate and solve more crimes, add police resources to fight violent crime, increase proactive communities. So we told people, these are the outcomes that we can expect with this levy. And then we told them, we translated that $1.50 per thousand rate into something that's more meaningful for an everyday person, so that this levy would cost 350 per year for typical homeless in assessed value, not a market value of $234,000. And then the money would be overseen by an independent for the citizens. So those are more informed, they have more information about what it's going to buy, what the benefits are going to be, and how much it's going to cost. We checked in again, and we said, now knowing this, you plan to vote yes or no? And there was a slight movement towards yes, so from 34% to 40%, so a six-point increase. Opposition or the no vote went from 58 to 53, but we're still well below a majority. I will also say, as we go through this, this is not a hard and fast, always true rule, but typically you'd like to see support for anything that you are going to put on the ballot in the short term, to be closer to 60%. Support doesn't always erode as you get closer to an election, but it typically does erode if there's an organized opposition. And so, you know, it's nice to have that cushion there as you're planning for the future. I have worked on projects where support rose during a campaign. Those types of projects, or those sorts of campaigns usually don't have an opposition. There's strong support across ideological or different types of community groups, city leaders are all engaged and supportive. So support can rise, but the practical advice would say you'd like to be north of 50 because support might fall as you get closer. Some just demographic differences, you can see that women more supportive than men, those who are older more supportive than those who are younger. It's going to be the reverse, and we look at the next levy, and so that's one to keep in mind, and that's sort of the party breakdown, or ideological breakdowns, you expect Democrats more supportive than Republicans in non-affiliated groups. And then here are the groups that are more likely to say that they oppose, and they're sort of the mirror images. Geographically, you can see the differences with the wards. Do keep in mind that 400 voters across eight wards, so sample size gets pretty small, and so the margins of error get pretty large. If we look at on the left side, just to think of like north, northeast, west, and south, there's not much difference across the broader areas across the city, all being opposed, all sort of showing similar levels of support. We did ask open-ended, you know, if you said you were going to vote yes, we wanted to know why, and that people could express it in their own words. Again, we listened to all their comments, we read all their feedback, and tried to put it into categories. And so the number one reason, really far above anything else, 41% of those who said that they planned to vote yes on this, said the need to improve public safety. Now, so it's really, this is really about, I guess, a, you know, it didn't say police necessarily, but this levy had sort of the police element and the fire element, and among those who said that they planned to vote yes, they were really focused in more on the public safety, police-related elements. 20% said, you know, these are needed core services, that's more, I think, thinking police and fire. But then you look at the next two, need more police officers, support more police officers, tackle crime. So there is sort of, among our likely voters in an odd-year special election who plan to vote yes for something like this, are more attracted to the public safety features. It's not that they dislike, I don't think we see in fire, or I don't think that's a priority, but they're really more salient, more urgent for them, was more the public safety side. Among those who said they were going to vote no, we asked the same question, why? Tell us in your own words, what's the important reason? And here we heard things more about government, in their words, mismanagement of funds, as well as property taxes being too high, they can't afford it, or they're opposed to any new taxes. And there's obviously overlap between those two, or these three. You might be opposed to new taxes because you have some distrust in government, or you might oppose new taxes because, gosh, you can't afford things anymore. So there could be some overlap, but this is the key reason, sort of just sort of not sure about how it might be managed, and apprehension about additional taxes. We then did ask, of the different elements, sort of the things you're going to buy, what is the most important? So we gave folks an opportunity to identify that. Again, these are the things that were asked about directly or explained directly, in what we call the informed test. But the top things here are retaining those 18 existing police officers and adding police officers, 26%, 23%. And then the lower rated were retaining firefighters and adding fires. Again, please don't hear that folks aren't interested in fire, but of those who planned, or, you know, of the folks we talked to, particularly those who planned to vote yes, it is that public safety that is driving. And that matches, in the earlier, when you looked at just when people identified the most important issues, it was, public safety was high up on the list. And then we asked, you know, of the outcomes that we would expect, what are the outcomes that would be most meaningful to you or most important to you? And here we see adding police resources to fight violent crime, dangerous street drugs like fentanyl, kind of a top tier by itself. Then next is increase of proactive community policing to reduce neighborhood crimes, again, more of this public safety policing than some of the other outcomes. So that's where we start with the public safety levy, and then here we go to community livability, and this is going to be set up in a similar style, where first, we ask this kind of caption, this very short language that has the requirements about increasing property taxes more than 3%, and shall Salem improve community livability for libraries and parks and recreation with a levy rate the same as before? So here we start at 33% yes, 59% no. Again, on that certain yes and that certain no, you know, we see the big gap with 60% certain yes and 40% no. And then, like before, we provided more information, hey, this is what you're going to buy with this levy, and these are the sorts of outcomes that you could expect. So keeping the existing library services and hours at the main library West Salem Ranch, expanding library service and hours seven days a week at the main library, and five days a week at the West Salem Ranch, keep parks safe, clean, and green, keep the senior center 50-plus hours, our service and hours. And again, the rate's the same, and so we asked about that as well. So informed with this, how did that affect people's opinions? And again, we see very little movement. So we went from 33% initially to 36% when they had more information in terms of the yes vote. The no vote dropped three percentage points from 59 to 56. Again, these are some of the key demographics who are the supporters. Remember that with the public safety levy, it was those who were oldest who were more supportive. For the libraries, parks, the community livability levy, it's the reverse, where it's our younger voters, 18- to 49-year-olds, who are most supportive, and older demographics somewhat less supportive. And then similar partisan differences that you would expect there, too. We have homeowners and renters broken up, too, here as well, with any time you have a property tax, renters may pay those indirectly through the rents, but properties, or homeowners, you know, get that bill, and so it's important to have that breakdown here, where you see higher support among renters than homeowners. Again, geographic differences, similar distribution, type of distributions we've seen. So again, why? We give people an opportunity to express themselves in their own words, why they might vote for this. So this is important. So this is of those who plan to vote yes, of those yes voters, more than anything else, they identified libraries. Libraries are essential. Education, for literature, they prioritize libraries. And it's not a big difference there between libraries and parks, but libraries, more than parks, next on the list here is to help maintain parks, keep them clean and safe, and then the sort of idea that these are core city services. So this is of the yes voters, so I'll keep that in mind. For there are no voters, we heard similar sorts of things we heard before, gosh, property taxes too high, can't afford more. We heard more comments about, hey, couldn't you take some resources from other parts of the city and reallocate them towards the library? That came up more with this community livability levy than the public safety levy, and there's probably a lesson there in terms of what people prioritize, and then similar sort of, I'm just opposed to new taxes. So among our yes voters, who had the opportunity to say, why are you going to vote yes? More than anything else, they said something about libraries. But among all folks, this is where we gave people the outcomes, or what are you going to buy with this levy? Among all voters who considered this question, more than anything else was keeping parks safe, clean, and green. So more parks among all voters, among our yes voters, it was more libraries. You can see a pretty substantial gap there between parks and our second one, expanding library services. So just want to do some comparison, this is just, this slide is just a level set again, so these are the informed tests, so this is after they got the information about what it's going to buy and what it's going to cost. This is just a reminder, so the public safety ended at 40%, the community livability ended at 36%. And we asked people, hey, if you had to choose between these two potential levies, what's your preference, or what's your priority? And here we see less than half, 44%, but clear plurality saying public safety levy over the community livability levy, and then 21%. We give them the option to say neither, 12% say that they don't know. But forced to choose between the two, there was a preference for the public safety levy over the community livability. So then if you were, if you were someone who said you supported the public safety levy, but you oppose the community livability levy, so imagine somebody who said yes on one and no on the other, we say, hey, you know, why was that? And then for this, folks, we really, again, it's, we need more police or public safety is the higher part, and you're really prioritizing the policing, public safety aspect of the levy. And then for those who said that they would support the community livability levy but oppose the public service levy, why was that? Well, here we got some more comments about, here, police are overfunded or police are not accountable. So these are more comments that were more negative about policing specifically, and some of it has to do with the new police station, some of it has to do with more generalized comments about the police, as a service has too much money, and then some of these accountability, police mistrust sorts of comments. Now, again, or not again, I didn't call it that, these are really small sample sizes, so this one, there's just 50 people of our 400 who are yes on the community levy, you live a builder levy, but no on public safety. And on this one, the previous one, there were just 56 people, that's what this dot there is in the bottom, who were yes on the public safety levy but no on the community livability levy. So, you know, interpret these results with those small sample sizes in mind. So we did want to know, particularly if we didn't see support for these levies, to check in, well, if, would you consider something with reduced costs, but also less service attached to it as well? And so we asked some options. And so on the left here is a public safety levy. These numbers, again, you've seen before, it's set informed test, 40% yes, 53% no. And then we said, well, what if there was a reduced cost option that was a dollar per assessed $1,000 that retained but did not expand some services? So retained but did not expand. We actually saw support erode from to 30%. I will say, this is just a methodological challenge, this is a choice we have to make in a project like this. What we, I don't know with absolute certainty, is that if we would have entered the survey and only asked about a dollar, where would support be for a dollar? People are anchored, it's an inevitability, like they've answered the questions about $1.50, and now they have to consider a dollar. If we would have asked them cold about a dollar, maybe the support would be a little bit higher, but our best evidence is that we're not getting an additional level of support for a levy that was at a lower rate but didn't expand services. Similarly, again, on the left here, these are, just for comparison's sake, you've seen these numbers before, this is the informed test for the public, or the community livability levy. It was at 36% at $1.50, and then we said, well, what about 75 cents? And that would retain services and expand some library services, but not do the whole, not do as much as the $1.50. And here we go from 46 to 43, so that's a little bit more increase, just still below that 50% level, and certainly below the 60% level that I'd like us to be at. And then towards the end, we said, you've considered some different things, you've considered $1.50- And then towards the end, we said, you've considered some different things, you consider this dollar fifty for public safety, a dollar fifty for community livability. Dollar for public safety and seventy-five cents for community livability. Among these, which is your preference? And here, nothing gets anywhere close to fifty percent. So there's not a majority who said that's the thing for 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 us. A plurality, again, public safety at the top at a dollar fifty. So at that theme of sort of prioritizing public safety, if you're forced to choose, you'd rather have more than than less, but but still we see for any option that we tested, less than fifty percent support. But of the things we tested, some preference for the for the public safety. That's the the data, and Tony and I are here to try to answer any questions you might have. And I'll stop sharing my screen so I can see.
All right. Thank you, John. Are there questions? I guess I'll start with, what would you say would be strategies that might work to move the public and towards a yes in in either of these, given the what you've seen in the in the polling?
Well, there that's a let me talk in a general sense first, and then maybe some specifics to think about in the context of this.
Can we turn the volume up? I'm sorry. Hold on one second, John. It seems like we lost some volume.
Okay. Give me a thumbs up when you're ready. Okay. Can you hear me now?
That's not a thumbs up yet.
Okay.
My thumbs are hidden.
Should I keep on talking?
There we go. Now you're good.
Okay, okay. So in a general, so other communities have been in this place that we've worked with, where have we seen support increase to be able to get to majority vote? And what are the characteristics that made that happen? I'm gonna use partly because it's fresh in my mind, but also because I think it's a good example, it's analogous to to Salem. And that is, we've worked with the city of Gresham over the last two years. They had a public safety levy that failed in May of twenty twenty-three. And then they did some things, and then they put the public's a similar but different public safety levy on the ballot in May twenty twenty-four. Asked now, Gresham had not passed a funding measure for thirty-two years. So they had a long history of lack of success. The things that were crucial for Gresham, one, I do think nobody wants to fail the ballot, and there can be negative consequences of failing at the ballot. But one of the benefits of being on the ballot in twenty twenty-three was that they engaged a community conversation about the needs. Now, they didn't get to majority vote, but there was information that was in part of the community about the need through that campaign in twenty twenty-three. That's one thing that is that is just effort has to be made to engage the community in the conversation. Two is that in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, I would say in twenty twenty-three, there was lukewarm support among some key actors, and in twenty twenty-four, there is very active and engaged support for them. There's specific reasons why that happened, but I wouldn't say if the community is uncertain or ambivalent about an issue, and they're not seeing coordinated support among key community leaders, it's very difficult to get from a negative place to a positive. So that, you know, how that works for Salem, there's lots of things that would go with that, but that is an element. Let's say cross cutting or interesting coalitions are important, to see business with labor, to see social activist organizations with police. You know, having those sorts of relationships and collaborations into demonstrate to the community is really important. I'd say being very, very clear and consistent with messaging about the most important that how this is going to connect to the most important priorities that happen in the community. In Gresham, I don't want to, it's not my, I'm not the policymaker at all, but I would just, my observation in Gresham is that the measure in May of twenty twenty-three had some funding for homelessness services. It was a it was a but it was a small amount for homelessness services. And I'm using this as an example, because this is not what we asked about in this levy. But the small amount was enough to repel some voters who just didn't want that as part of the levy at all. But was not enough to engage or encourage or to motivate those who really thought that that was the most important issue. So I think it's important to design it in a way that connects both what what people say matters to them and and does so with it doesn't create cleavages in the community as well. And that is to say, lastly, whether it's D H M, other groups, you know, I'm not trying to sell anything like, you know, having professionals that do this and can take the time and put it in a good place, that's all for it. The one thing about the survey is you're you're trying to interpret the results. And if you want to think about them with more hope than maybe that numbers here show is that we did not test any persuasive messages about these. We did not provide people with information about why this might be good or communities might support it. We did not share like key leaders in the community who might be supportive of it. Those types of things, you know, you know, crisp language about the benefits delivered by trusted people in the community about them. But that would make a big difference, and that is not something that this survey had the opportunity to ask about. And so perhaps if that can be developed in the future, we could see more support, we could see support. That was a long answer, Mayor, but I hope it was helpful. And I can't hear you.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I couldn't hear you, but now I can.
Okay. Counselor Nordak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You started talking about one of those levies including a small amount of funding for homelessness services, which was enough to repel some voters, but not enough to motivate others. Were you referring to the twenty-three levy that failed?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, and Gresham did opt to take that out. The other thing about the the Gresham levy that's very, very important, the twenty twenty-three ballot measure, just the text, the language, the summary. It it and and this, I think our friends in Gresham would acknowledge this is that it 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 talked about the dollars that were going to be raised and be allocated to different elements. The twenty twenty-four levy talks specifically about how the money was going to be used. Like people have to have a very clear idea, if I say yes to this, this is the outcome I can expect. I think we did a pretty good job in this survey by by doing that. But I would just say, like, as a as you think about moving forward, being very clear and articulate, repeated over and over again, like, this is the outcome that you can expect with this investment in your community.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have another question.
Yes, of course.
Great. John, another question I have for the twenty twenty-four levy in Gresham, the one that passed successfully. Was there anything else on the ballot with an ask? Because as I'm sure you're aware, taxing districts like to go to the voters, but probably not all at the same time. So, for example, if there's a levy brought by a local community college or a school district or another taxable district, I'm just wondering what else was on the ballot in twenty twenty-four when this passed in Gresham, if you know?
I can get back to you. I can look it up. I don't know off the top of my head, but there does spark a couple of thoughts. One is that the May twenty twenty-four levy was on a primary cycle rather than a special election cycle. And that had an effect in turnout. It wasn't as much as maybe you would expect. It wasn't as much compared to other years turnout in this May twenty twenty-four primaries pretty lows, but the composition electorate frankly was more democratic. I mean, and that was helpful. The other thing in May twenty twenty-three, what I do recall very clearly, was that there was a controversial tax to pay for tenant representation. And it it failed overwhelmingly in in Gresham as well as West Moleskine County. And I definitely think in May of twenty twenty-three, a disadvantage to that levy was it was on the ballot was something that was it didn't compete in the sense that like it because it passed so overwhelmingly, like people really weren't making a choice like this tax or that tax. But being up next to something that was deeply unpopular, I'm certain was a detriment to the twenty twenty-three levy for Gresham. And so it is important, you're 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 right, counselor, to think about what might be competing on the ballot, both in terms of like what people might want to say yes to both, but can't? Or what is so negative that's created casting a a dark shadow on that election?
Counselor Varney, did I see your hand earlier?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, my question was about the margin of error, I guess I wanted to ask, for example, on the public safety levy ballot test, for example. So where they're providing only a ballot title with fifty-eight percent saying no, does the with the margin of error, does that mean that fifty-eight percent is basically has five potential points on each side? Is that what you're saying?
And it, that's what I'm saying, and you you said it the right way, it goes both directions. So could it could be more supportive or or more negative? But yes, that's the that's the way to interpret it.
Okay, and that's the same for all the, basically all the graphs, charts in here. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Further questions? Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we should be careful comparing us to Gresham. I think as we're in a completely different situation. You know, but John, for those those two elections where it didn't pass and it did, did were you involved in any polling? Like, where were they before that? Were, I mean, I'd like to hear those numbers.
I was not involved with any polling in twenty twenty-three, but I was involved with polling in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four, when we were in the, they were in a different situation insofar as when we polled in twenty twenty-four, City Council was pretty committed to particular construction of the of the of the levy. But when we polled in twenty twenty-four, so I don't know, January, February-ish, something around that period. It's in the first test, like we saw here, the kind of that initial test, I don't remember the exact percentage, but something around forty percent. Something around that, give or take a percentage point or two. In that survey with Gresham, though, we were able to give people a bunch of persuasive statements about why people might support the the levy and ask about trusted messengers and who they would trust on this issue. Once we were able to do that, support increased in the poll to about fifty-four percent, give or take a percentage point or two. At at the end of the day, I think it passed fifty-six-ish percent about that, which is an example of like, you know, if everything's in place, you have you know, a community that's sort of all swimming in the same direction, and there's good messaging, and you know, there's resources. You can get from below fifty percent to above fifty percent.
Yes. Follow-up question, John, were the amounts being asked for in those two the same or different?
Different, so it was a dollar, if I recall, it was a dollar fifty in twenty twenty-three and dropped to either a dollar, a dollar thirty-five in twenty twenty-four. I think that we've done some subsequent research in the end, I've reported up to Gresham to the City Council there, so you know, it's public record. But so you could go back to the City Council meeting and read it too. We did some focus groups after the twenty twenty-four levy, and I I'm doubtful that the drop from a dollar fifty to a dollar thirty-five was consequential, except for the fact if the city had decided not to decrease it. Like, in that world, I don't know if the opposition maybe would have responded, you know. The city didn't listen to us, we said no, and they're coming back to us with the same thing. So I think it was important for the city to demonstrate that they had listened to the community and made some changes. When we talked to voters, I don't think that a dollar, well, again, if it was a dollar, a dollar, a dollar thirty or a dollar thirty-five, I can't remember the exact number. I don't think that amount was consequential, but I think that the sense that the leadership of the community heard their concerns and made some changes did matter.
John, was there organized opposition to either of those campaigns?
Yeah, I had more so in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and I wasn't engaged with the twenty twenty-three campaign. So I that that would have touched on speaking to you, I will say, there was a much more robust pro campaign in twenty twenty-four, both with dollars, with, you know, professionals who helped running it. And among various leaders in the city, even if they didn't oppose in twenty twenty-three, that maybe they weren't super active in their support. Were in twenty twenty-four, there was robust coordinated efforts or from sort of all the all the all the key players.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Counselor Varney.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure I am interpreting these correctly on slides thirty-six and thirty-seven, where it's talking about comparing the two proposed levy options. So the first slide and the second slide, I'm trying to figure out. So the difference is in the first slide, all the voters are being asked about how they feel about a public safety levy, and then they're all being asked about a community livability levy, correct? Okay.
These are actually, correct, these are actually kind of repeat. So this was just a new section of report to level set again, so you could see it in side by side. So these were new numbers, but yes, all people were asked about public safety levy, and that's the answers, that's the numbers, this is slide thirty-six. Those are the responses on the right side, all were asked community livability levy, and those are the answers.
Okay, and then on the next one, they're asked to choose between the two. So am I reading this correctly that?
You're reading, you're reading, oh, go ahead, I interrupted.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that there's double the support for the public safety levy over the community livability levy. That's what it's saying.
You are, you are reading that correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hoy, did I see your hand earlier? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just kind of want to understand, John, how the how the process of the survey took place. So we start with four hundred people, and by the time we get to page thirty-eight and thirty-nine, we're down to fifty-six and fifty people. How did you get to that number? Were they asked a certain series of questions that led them to be able to answer that particular question?
Yeah, good question. So for those particular slides, those are the number of people who said yes on one of the the levies, you know, the public safety or the community livability, but no on the other. So we try to isolate those folks. If you were like just a public safety person and not a community livability levy, why did you end up in that space? And then the the reverse. We're trying to say like, is there, is there a group that like? This is another way to sort of look at, like, are people just against any levy? Any sort of tax increase, or is it another way to try to slice, like, is it really specific to the thing that's being asked about? Public safety, community livability, that's that's the intent here. And if you sort of, I think if you look at the the numbers, let me so get to my slide. On slide thirty-eight, those were, this is the the fifty-six people who said yes to public safety, but no to community livability. Among that population people, which isn't very big, but among that population, they were really focused on police and really focused on public safety. Remember, the levy had the the public safety with the policing aspect and the fire aspect. For so for this particular group of people, they were really homing in on, you know, for me, what really matters is police. And that's the theme that we see in the other questions we asked to kind of, you know, like, like slide thirty-seven, we were just talking about if they had to choose between public safety, community livability levy, more people said public safety. So that's that's another way for us to try to identify these key themes. On slide thirty-nine, the folks that said, no, I'm gonna be no on the public safety, but yes on community livability. You know, what we heard from this relatively small number of people, it's only fifty people that we heard from. But for those folks, that they did have some antagonism, antagonism towards place, whether it's because they're overfunded or because they that they were accountable or they mistrusted them. So that was our attempt there. That's why that's why these these kind of the numbers here, the the sample size is smaller, because we're really trying to isolate different.
Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for the outstanding presentation so far. I think Counselor Varney hit on this a bit with the question about the margin of error being four point nine percent, and that goes in either direction, it could be higher or lower. So, I mean, would it be correct to say that with the the first past question in regards to public safety at, you know, one point five dollars per thousand and the livability at one point five dollars per thousand, that the data is slightly different, but not statistically so? I mean, these look, as a person who looks at data, they look about identical.
The we look at the the ballot tests, right? The yes, they're not statistically different.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they look very similar.
They're not, the differences between those are not statistically significantly different, meaning I can't tell you for certain that the the differences is there are not just random chance that you would have in a survey. But what I can tell you is that there is a statistically significant difference when we ask the question, if you had to choose between one or the other. That difference, that forty-four percent versus twenty-two percent on slide thirty-seven, that difference is statistically different. Set difference, I'm saying like that, that's outside the margin of error.
And I I agree with that assessment, and that's on slide thirty-seven, where it's forty-four percent said yes to public safety, and only twenty-two percent said to the community livability levy. And did that question go out to all four hundred responders?
All four hundred, yep.
Okay, and then this is something that maybe I only care about, but like, how many people said yes to both or some? said yes to both or some version of both categories?
I don't know. That's on my, Tony maybe does, and if Tony can, if he does, he can chime in or send me a note, but we can certainly follow up with you. It's a good question. I don't knock on my head.
At least one person did.
Yeah.
Because I got surveyed.
For the record, I got surveyed and I said yes to both.
I so too.
Okay. And then, I, again, when we look at the, kind of the last couple pages where the, we have the, there's two slides, it's 41 and 42, I mean, I expected, I think I know the answer, but just to clarify, when we look at the comparison of the original to a reduced cost option, these are all very similar. I mean, is there any statistically significant difference in those?
No. So even on the, so on 41, it's pretty easy to say that there's no statistically significant difference, go from 40% to 38%. On slide 42, we're talking about community livability levy, you go from 36 to 43, that's not, that's the difference within the margin of error for sure. You know, it's a little bit bigger, but it is not, it's not statistically significantly different.
I agree with you, but I appreciate you drawing that, that out. So, I mean, would it be, this might be awkwardly phrased, I'm prone to phrasing questions awkwardly, but is the, all four of these options at first pass seem unpopular, but the least unpopular option is the library services one at the reduced amount? Does that seem accurate?
There, as, to our best estimate, the reduced cost at 75 cents, the retaining library services had the highest support.
Yeah.
You're right to say that if they are all within the sort of margin of each other, but are, to our best estimate, that's what the results.
Okay. And then, oh, go ahead.
I will say, just be, but, but, you know, does, you have to, you don't, well, you can interpret the data, that makes more sense to you, but, you know, we tried to ask these questions in some different ways. So if you look at, you know, slide 43, you know, we gave people the choice of all of them, you know, which one of these would you prefer? You know, 75 cents is the lowest. So there is, you know, there's some competing, some competing results here. And so it had the highest level of support, but it wasn't the preference among a plurality of people within the community, given the choices that we shared with them in the survey.
And I, I think that, since we're at 43, super nerd right now, but the plurality was none on this one, not even public safety.
You are correct. You're correct. That I was, I was focused on the green, but you were right, the, the none there is the greater number.
Okay. Thank you for that confusing information.
Thank you for calling that out, Counselor. I was going to, but I didn't want to, didn't want to call him out on it, but I was like, yeah, none is actually the plurality.
Thank you both.
Yeah. Additional questions? Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. And I will say that I heard, I did not get the survey. I never get the city's surveys. I'm always bummed. But I did hear from two people who took the survey and said no to everything, not because they don't want more taxes and not because they don't want to support, they wanted to support all of these things, but they don't agree with the, with the levy idea. They didn't want a levy, they wanted something else. So that is also something to throw into the mix, very interesting in how folks read this and receive it and take the, take the survey. So my question for you is, when we were back doing the bond, you know, we were really aiming for that 60% or greater, and we are nowhere near that. And so my question to you is, is as we are gleaning information from this, would you say that we are really far away from going to the voters for anything and that maybe we need to spend some more time gathering information from the taxpayers? And I guess what would you suggest would be next steps for that?
So I want to be, I want to be respectful of you all as the decision makers and any future decision makers and kind of stay within my lane, best I can, and answer your question with the best of my ability. If you went to the voters with one of these today, like literally today, it's quite clear, you would not get majority support. You're not going to voters today and so that there is opportunities to do something in the future, to communicate to them. And perhaps I'm just being repetitive, but it, this, the city, you know, that's going to be from City Council to the unions, to other key stakeholders, need to look to the voters that you are united in this, whatever this is. I mean, that's a crucial element. There needs to be trusted community leaders, stakeholders that have reached to the public in ways that maybe you don't or have trusted voices in ways that the city doesn't, to be supportive and communicating. I don't know if that exists at this point. You know, maybe it does, maybe it could be in the future. I think the public, through the various work we've done, has been pretty ambivalent about the need, whether it's this survey or the work we did in the spring or sort of the surveys where the survey focus groups did it in the past. In the communication, it's spoken about what's being delivered, but what is the need as well? Voters tend to repel against feeling like they're being threatened, but I suspect that the community doesn't fully understand this. I don't suspect, I feel quite confident, the voters don't fully understand the situation cities in. And how you get there from October to, you know, whether it's May or November sometime in the future, it's a lot of work and consistent work over time. So I, those are, those are just some high level, high level observations. The other thing where I just, I simply as a pollster cannot speak to, I do not know fully your financial situation. Asking, there's a big difference whether, if you, if you go with the levy, you know, if you ask in May, you can start capturing money later in the year. If you ask in November, you have to wait a year. And those are big financial consequences that I can't speak to and those are, you know, the trade-offs you all as policymakers need to make. You know, right now, it, you're starting from a place where you know in order to get to yes, there's a lot of work to do and hopefully I've described some of the things that I think there need to happen together.
So John, I heard you use some words in there like consistent communication. That was one of the key little phrases I heard. But what I didn't hear you say is that this situation is hopeless, but that is, that there's work to be done between now and whenever this is sent to the ballot, if it's, if it's ever sent to the ballot. And so I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you can speak to that and help folks understand what that consistent language or messaging sounds like? Because I think that there has been inconsistent language in the past, like that might have maybe at least contributed to this result. So I'm wondering if you have any words of wisdom for us for that?
Well, some general things is that don't, they're not saying that you, you have in your communications that you individually are, but these are just general things. Don't ever take for granted how little people know. And, you know, repeating really basics over and over again, like city services are funded by, primarily funded by property taxes. I mean, something as simple as that. The key, the main things that we spend money on the city are things like public safety and the other things that they are. To really, you know, say those consistently over and over and over and over again, it, that, that really basic stuff matters because you have to, you know, trying to think of my, my, my garden metaphor, but you have to get that soil ready for, for the time when the ask is going to be. I think you also need to demonstrate to the community, and no doubt you are, but demonstrate the community consistently and over and over again, don't take for granted that they might know about how you are being a good steward of the current tax dollars, what you have done to manage the budget under these difficult financial constraints, what you've been done to manage the budget when we have a property tax system like we do and Salem's position where so much of the property is off the tax rolls. So folks know that a simple solution of just tighten your belt isn't the full answer. Those are a couple of things. Once you make a decision about what's going to go to the ballot, you know, identifying the outcomes that are most important to people, whether it's hiring police officers to investigate crime or have, you know, a fire station to be more quick, respond to things quicker, whatever those outcomes are going to be, let's identify the two or three that are most important and persuasive to folks and just repeat them over and over again by a diverse group of messengers and hopefully they come from different perspectives. Those are, those are some of the, I think, the, the key things to do and, you know, do them on the daily.
Thank you. I want to, I want to further explore some of your other words. And you, you talked about voters don't like to be threatened. And I'm, I struggle with that because, you know, I've been accused of threatening voters with, with bad outcomes, when I believe I'm being candid, not threatening, but I mean, like for instance, I believe that if we don't find revenue very soon, we will have to make very difficult choices that will involve cutting significant services here in the city. I'm talking fire stations, I'm talking police officers, I'm talking library. I believe that that's our very real situation. And how do you suggest we communicate that without it sounding like, because, because I think people deserve to know that information, but I certainly don't want it to sound like a threat. It's certainly not. I just want people to know that's where we are. Others have said that's not where we are, but as the mayor, I feel an obligation to be very candid with people about where I see the situation. I see it as very dire. I'm very concerned that we're going to close our library soon if we don't find new revenue. I'm very concerned we're going to close fire stations if we don't find new revenue. I'm very concerned we're going to lay out police officers if we don't find new revenue. How do you communicate that without it sounding like a threat?
Some of it's going to be, with all due respect, Mayor, because you are the elected, you know, leader in the community, that you might not be the best messenger. And you are saying you in this particular case, because you're asking the question, but there may be times when the best messenger is that frontline firefighter who can tell the story about what it means to have services cut, or that frontline police officer can, that can talk about the, the benefit that the community would have in terms of public safety if they had a little more resources to do whatever it might be. That those voices are so much more trusted than elected officials and that's not a Salem comment in any way. That is just where we are right now as a country. And so I'd say, one is just let's, let's find out who are the best people to talk about the risks of services being cut and it's probably those frontline people, particularly when it comes to public safety. And then the other is that, you know, some of this is just the long game, just making sure that the communication over time is done, that, you know, communicating over that, on a regular basis, how the city's been a good stewardship of tax dollars, so that they are, the voters are not feeling like they're taken by surprise when they're told by leaders that some big cut's going to happen if we don't vote yes for this, that they have been made aware to the best of our ability over a sustained period of time what the financial situation is. Now, that latter part, I'll be realistic, like, you know, there's, there's only so much movement you can make, but to the extent that you can, you put the city in a, in a better position.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilor Varney?
I'm sorry, I know I have lots of questions. John, my question is about, I guess, page 13, where it says homelessness and public safety are the biggest issues voters want leaders to address. Where do those percentages come from? I mean, it sounds like, looking at it, since it's over 100%, where, how did they come about? Because this doesn't refer to percentage of the respondents. Where do these percentages come from?
Yeah, good question. And so this is an open-ended question where people can say what they want. Now, we ask them for their most, but some people can't resist saying more than one thing. And so if they say more than one thing, we actually code up to three things. And so people said, what's really most important is, is police, but you know, they got to have better parks too. We don't make a choice when there's comments like this to, to only code one. So we'll code up to three things and so you can end up with more than 100%.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Nordike, I acknowledged you. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
No worries.
Anyway, you mentioned having the staff members who are most directly impacted by the cuts being effective messengers. I'm sure at Gresham, like us, has constraints on what city employees can say in an election. So I'm wondering, to what extent did the city of Gresham deploy their own staff, whether they were, you know, line employees or management level? To what extent did they use city staff members to carry their message in '24?
Sure. Well, the unions have more flexibility with the union say, but you're right, city staff is city staff are constrained about what they can say. One of the things that Gresham did really well, they put on great town halls at fire stations where they had community events about the levy. And I think, I think people being able to see with, you know, not every person in the community goes, but key people go and then they talk about it with their neighbors and they see it, you know, events posted on next door, things like that. Being able to see touch, even if you're not delivering a message directly, making the impact of the ask and the financial situation city more tangible, I think that was a particularly effective thing that they did. But then, of course, having the support for the, the unions to represent these frontline employees is important.
Councilor Phillips?
This is a, a brief question, John. Do you have in front of you like what the split was between the like text-based responses and the phone responses?
I have to double check, but it's either 50-50 or 60-40. Would not be any more than 60-40, 60-40 text. I think for this one, we did 50-50. If you give me, if there's another question, I can look it up right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilor Hoy?
A different question, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious, how many people were actually called or what was the outreach?
I would have to give you, I'd have to check with our, the field, the, the folks that actually administered a survey, do the phone calls. I will say, I would suspect, because it would be typical, that the response rate was somewhere between 1 and 2%. Now, that means, that doesn't mean that 99% of the people got the call and said, no, I won't participate, but got contacted and maybe didn't respond. And that is, that's pretty typical. And, you know, it goes back to my comment about setting quotas at the beginning of our conversation, is that we know the response rates are low and that some types of people might be more likely to take a survey than others. And so what I, what I can ensure you that those, those criteria like, you know, age and gender and area of the city and political affiliation, that those proportions are, to our best estimates, consistent with what we would expect in a odd number of years special election.
May I follow? I, I realize the outcome. Was this, was this number of folks? But how many calls actually went out? Is that quantified?
It is quantified. I still don't have it at hand. I can certainly get it for you.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
Oh, I just, Tony sent me a note. It was 40% live interview phone calls, 60% texts.
Thank you. Councilor Varney?
I had a question about income. Was that individual or household?
We asked for household and we hope the people, that's the response that they give, but that's the question we asked.
Thanks.
John, I think we're winding down on our questions. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager. I believe he has some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John. I really appreciate your presentation and your wise counsel. It's, it's always appreciated. We are going to come back on October 30th with the Budget Committee and we will continue this discussion along with a discussion about our financial forecast. John and Josh and Callie and their team are working feverishly to finalize our financial forecast, our five-year financial forecast. We'll be delivering that to you on October 30th and we will continue the conversation with that. with that information and this information, moving us forward towards our next steps. Uh, it's not clear what our next steps are at this point. Clearly, the data that John has provided, and what John has said, I think is what we all understand, that if we're going to move forward, it's going to require a lot of work and commitment, and it's going to require the commitment of the community, and the community, I mean, city council, I mean, our unions, I mean, our employees, I mean, our civic organizations, uh, I mean, everybody has to be committed to this in order to move our community forward. And I know right now, at this point, I don't feel or see that commitment, so we have a lot of work to do to gauge whether that commitment is there, and then to clearly articulate what the message is going to be going forward. So, uh, for those who are watching, I encourage you to stay engaged, uh, we have a long ways to go before a decision is required, either for May or November, and we have a lot of work, uh, before we get there. So, uh, stay tuned, we'll see you again on October 30th, where we'll be convening the Budget Committee in this room to continue this conversation along with our financial forecast.
Thank you, Mr. Staley, we're adjourned.